Twenty years of the baking.
Town council meeting to order on the 12th day of June, 2025. A C P G, you may have seen the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, everyone who has received a copy of the minutes from the May meeting. If not, we need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Allison. Do we have a second? Second one. Thank Clarence. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Treasures report. Everyone has received a copy of the treasures report. Is there any questions? No? Good. So do we need... We don't need that. Okay. Bills for payment. You have them? Okay, are there any questions about the bills?
There is a change or there's an addition on the back, so there's a new bill.
Number fifty?
Yes. It's highlighted in yellow.
Okay. And I had a question about number two, but Melinda answered that, so we're fine. Any questions? No. We need a motion to approve the bills.
Make a motion to pay bills.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you. Police report. Jeremy.
All right, the ordinance are still in motion. The only problem we could have is getting the right context for the important properties to get the grass moved. It's been... Most of it has been taken care of. I just want to thank the fifth grade students at the elementary community, helping the police department if there are work for the 2026 police calendar. We had several entries and they did a outstanding job. And next part, I'll ask Sarah. Chief, can you go up there? Hey, as you know, Chief Dogg, he retiring on June 30th.
I don't know where to go from here.
Chief Dogg has served the law for career for 28 years. Do you want to thank him for his service? If anyone issues him the meritorious service award, we'll turn it over to this man. Thank you, Chief, for your service and your dedication.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeremy, you want me to read this, correct?
If you like, you can.
Okay.
Relax, it's always possible.
Are you going to pull right now? For his outstanding service and dedication to our community, Chief Dogg's efforts significantly enhanced the safety and well-being of our community, and his leadership has made a lasting impact on his colleagues and the citizens he served. These actions not only reflected his commitment to the town of Timberville, but also inspired others to strive for excellence in their roles. The merited service award is a testament to his dedication and passion for law enforcement.
I saw awards on the agenda. I'm like, why is there an S on it in there? So, I did not expect that. Thank you, Jeremy. What I did expect was the one that I was... Carl, you standing up here with the police? I'm asking. Appreciate it. All right, so not to make this about me, when I was hired over 10 years ago, and things were a little interesting around here back then, weren't they? So, the work that I was given is not about what I did, it's about what the police department did. And Carl was a very important part of that. He's been on the police committee, I think, since you started with the council, and was on my entire tenure, the most if not all day, and also the chair personally. And so, that could be just a symbolic thing, but in Carl's case, every time I had something that I wanted feedback on, Carl had an opinion. He was always paying attention and giving me good questions and good feedback to help me run the department, which is very invaluable, all right? During COVID, during some strange times in 2020, 2021, I think Carl called me almost every day at the beginning and every other day after that, checking on me, checking on my officers, making sure that we had what we needed and we were staying healthy. And I obviously, Carl took his position very seriously, and it was very critical for me, starting as the outside guy, to feel like I had support from the town that hired me. Carl, I'm sure you questioned some of the way I did things and everything, but you stuck with me the whole way. You've been supportive, not blindly, but supportive, asked questions, gave me what I needed, and I really appreciate that. So, for Carl Turner, the service on the service award. And it reads, "For his dedicated service to the Timberville Police Department through his positions on the Timberville Town Council and Police Committee awarded this day of the 12th of June. I appreciate everything he did for me and the police department, Carl."
Now, this server, he sounds jail free.
Yeah.
And Carl, I appreciate you very much. And Carl, don't sit down yet. We figured we'd save you a trip, so we're doing both in the same night. So, we've got more.
Yes.
We've got more for you.
Can I leave the one in my trunk?
You might. So, anybody that takes the time to serve on council should be commended for dedicating their time. It's not a high-paying position, as everybody knows. So, anytime somebody serves as long as Carl did, we like to recognize them, as Chief just did for the police department. So, what I'm going to read is a certificate of recognition. On behalf of the citizens of the town of Timberville, please present this certificate to Carl Turner Jr. in recognition of your 20 years of service as a town council member for the town of Timberville and as chair of the Public Safety Committee during that tenure. We are fortunate to have dedicated residents and officials like yourself who care about and take pride in their community. On behalf of the citizens of Timberville, I commend you for the time you sacrificed and your willingness to work as part of a team committed to enhancing the quality of life in our town. And June 12th, 2025, and it's signed by Vice Mayor Sharon James.
I just take a moment, just thank everyone that voted for me over the last 20 years. Thanks to all the councils that I've served with, the town staff, and all the employees. Thank you very much.
So, you want to go and read the adoption.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we need to read that.
So, we do have... Couldn't you talk about that, the adoption?
The traffic code? Oh, yeah. So, every year, especially for new council members, we need to adopt, let's see, five dash 1.1, yeah. Which is the traffic ordinance, which basically just says that the town is adopting the statewide traffic ordinances as their own, which enables the officers to write tickets based on town ordinances instead of state law, so that any funds or income received from that would go to the town instead of going to the state. Explain that sufficiently?
Yes, sir.
Police officers in the room? So, any other questions, I'm happy to answer, and it's just an annual thing that we do prior to July 1st every year.
Okay, there's no questions. We need a motion to adopt section 5 dash 1.1.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Clarence. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Kevin. Go around.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay. Okay, go ahead and do your public orders.
All right, so on the public works side of things, Chris, Eric, Carl, the town engineer, and I met with the two reps from Enring Garrett, our water source discovery, our water source discoverers project. That was the past, was that yesterday, maybe? And the report from the resistivity testing has been sent to the town. Potential test well locations identified and ranked. For the next step of the project, the contractor will be reaching out to the drillers and putting together cost estimates for drilling those test wells. And what I'd like to do, I was going to say that for this next session, but what I would like to do is have a meeting of the public works committee within the next week or week and a half, so that we go over that and the next item, and just bring it right up to speed on some of the more details. And I'll be emailing out that report that came back for anybody that's interested in that. I'll definitely get it up to public works, and if anybody that's not on the public works committee would like to see it, I'll send it to you all as well. We've received several proposals for updating the status system and have discussed those with the town engineer, and that's the other item that I would like to... That is included in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So, it's another item I'd like to discuss with the public works committee. Yesterday, we were alerted that our eight-inch water main along New Market Road was ruptured by work occurring at the tractor supply project site. Town was alerted promptly, and our crew had valves turned off quickly to isolate the area without much water loss from our tanks. Their construction crew had parts delivered to the site rapidly and made repairs. Even with the quick response, there were a few businesses that saw the interruption of their services because of the low water pressure. They did do a pretty good job getting that addressed pretty quick. And from last meeting, I reached out to our IT firm, and they were able to add email addresses for the town council members. We're going to start that project after July 1, when we're looking at our contractor IT servers also, because of the deal with the cost savings that we do after July 1. And that is all that I have for public works, unless anybody has any questions on anything. So, now we can jump back up and start this.
Then now we can. Okay, Brandon. You want to call the meeting of the planning commission to order?
Yeah, I'd like to call this session, the planning commission to order.
Okay, do you want to explain it then, Allison?
All right, so we've received a conditional use, or request for conditional use permit for a tobacco slash vape shop. Same location as the previous request that was submitted and withdrawn. And that is at 14056 Timberway, which is in the Food Line Shopping Center. It's in the old location of the jewelry vault. I believe representatives are here tonight that have submitted the application, so we can give them a... If you all would like to address the council and planning commission, you can, or we can, if you have nothing to present them, then we can open it up for public comment.
You want to add something to us?
I don't know if they have all that will work with this big of a crowd, so... Really, if he's not going to present anything, then we can just go.
Yeah, if you have any questions, something you want to add.
So, you need to say this.
Yeah, any public comment?
To the public hearing itself?
Yes.
Hi, dude. Hello? I'm Debbie Jessup, 180 South C Street. Many of you know, when this came up a couple of years ago, I was an advocate for not wanting this to come to our community. I feel like our community as a whole was already inundated with these types of establishments. I mean, there's two in Broadway, there's two in New Market, there's I don't even know how many in Harrisonburg. I mean, it seems like they're everywhere. Each one of the ones that I see are very gaudy, does nothing to enhance the appearance to the surrounding businesses at all. So, I'm here to ask tonight, what's the benefit for our town to have a tobacco slash vape shop? I looked online, I guess, you know, you all will get business license fee, some taxes that come off of it. What are the taxes that will come off of that, that will stay here in our town?
It would be business license.
Just the business license.
We're trying to figure what the sales tax would be. It's very difficult, because that all goes to the state and then is redistributed based on school population.
So, just looking at the license fee that you all will collect from that. So, I want to then ask, you know, what cost to the health for our community? So, we all know the dangers of smoking and tobacco use, like breathing problems, cancer, heart disease, addiction, and vape has been known to be even more of an immediate addiction type of thing happening. So, the long-term health of our community is at stake when we invite a business like this into our town. So, I really feel like if our council, you all approve this, then you are endorsing the use of this product for our citizens and our community, right? So, you're endorsing the use of a dangerous, life-threatening product for the long-term health care of our community. So, then my next question is, would you want your children or grandchildren buying and using these products? I don't, right? And most of you will probably say, no, you don't want your sons, you don't want your children, you don't want your grandchildren going in and starting this particular habit. So, if the answer to that is no, which I have a feeling most of you probably would feel that way, you know, would you take your children or grandchildren into this to shop local, you know, to keep local funds and things like that? I'm pretty sure the answer to that would probably be no, also for you all. So, I want you to think about it before you vote either yes or no this evening. And I know in the April limits, I think you all, the planning commission, recommended approval, which is why it goes to conditional use, so it's up to you all to decide. So, I'm asking for you to please put the long-term health of our community above any money that might potentially be brought in from this business. So, please, vote no for this.
There's one more, cigarette tax. We need a cigarette tax from the cigarette store somewhere.
So, again, long-term care and health for our community of the potential, any type of revenue that could come in off of this. Is that, you know, is that how you want to get our town revenue? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? If not, then we close the public hearing and... Okay, ask the council and planning commission if you have any questions. Right?
This can't be tabled, can it?
This is a completely different application. So, yes, you can.
So, we could make a motion to table it?
So, you, planning commission would have to formulate a recommendation or take... They could take some kind of action, whether to approve it or recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend table it. So, and then council would act off of planning commission's recommendation.
So, planning commission has not had a recommendation presented to town.
That they can't, because it's a joint public hearing, so they can't make a recommendation until after the public comment was submitted.
From the previous meeting.
From the previous meeting, right.
From the previous meeting, procedurally, what they did was recommend a public hearing. Because they have to make a recommendation for a public hearing to actually schedule a public hearing, then they can have to...
So, the previous recommendation to approve was from the first press.
Right, exactly.
So, is now our time to discuss what we think, or...
Can we defer the other room? Right, so the planning commission can convene out in front and continue their meeting out there. If anybody wants to go out there to hear that part of it, you're welcome to do that. And then they'll come back in and tell council what they've come up with, and then you all like one, and after they come back in and tell you, said that. So, you're...
Like joining the joint public, or the joint meeting?
Recede.
Recede. Yes, yes. Okay.
So, we do Mr. White.
So, we'll have to wait for the... And then the other ones are joint public hearing, too.
Because it's like each one of them is a public hearing, which is like meeting is... We could announce business and industry.
We could have done...
You could keep over here for it.
Okay.
Both being joined with the public.
All right, so business and industry. It appears that electrical service of Mr. Garcias is in the process of being or has been upgraded. They've been doing a lot of work down there. I still don't know an opening date, but it looks like there is progress being made, which is a positive. I sent the county council about Walmart's fueling station, which was... They're planning to construct a fueling station in the big grassy area right up off of American Legion Drive. And that was part of the original plan, but was eliminated at the time the store was built. I'm going to be attending a pre-application meeting that Rockland County is hosting next week for that project. And we have received, just got it yesterday, the proposed site layout for that. So, if anybody wants to see that after the meeting, I'll show it to you. Overall, at first glance, it looks pretty decent. There's one issue that I have a little question about as far as the entrance into the actual fueling station. We'll get, it's very new, so we'll get that out to council, planning commission, and everybody will view that.
But that hasn't changed since May 1, correct?
I didn't go back and compare it. It's in the same location, but I didn't go back and compare it to the original plans yet to see how close it lines up to that. And we do have an opening date on Dollar General store, got that today. June 25th is what they're planning for their opening of your remodel for the Dollar General.
The remodel or they're not opening?
They're remodeling the pop shelf.
I know. I thought you said opening, I'm like, is nothing over there?
But they're planning to open on June 25th. Yeah. It'll be quick, it'll be quick, so. And that's all that I have on business and industry, unless somebody has any questions.
Okay, Brad, you all have a recommendation?
We do have a recommendation.
So, the applicant does comply with all the available regulations, so therefore we recommend approval.
Counsel?
Is there anybody else that's looking at the location? Has anybody else reached out? The only thing that comes to my mind is if there's two in Broadway, there's two in New Market, I don't think one in Timberville is going to make kids start vaping. I don't think it's my favorite thing I would like to see, but I would like to see something going there that is making the town some money. So, I think maybe we need to like talk about it a little bit more and say, what's the pros and cons of this? Not what they're selling, the store itself, and what the face of it looks like. I don't like that, I'm not going to go in there, but I can't say that that store being there is making the town money off cigarette tax and the state tax and the business license. If no one else is looking at the location, then maybe we should think about what is it, how is it negatively going to affect the town? With them being there. I'm not all for it myself being it, but I think we need to think about it, like if there's one in every other town, you know, what's going to hurt for there to be one in our town? And they're obviously making money because they're popping up everywhere. So, they're definitely generating some money. I mean, it's, smoking has been around for longer than I have, so... I mean, you know, it's not like people ain't going to be going somewhere buying. You know, the people from Timberville now are probably driving to Broadway and New Market, but we could at least be getting their money off of it, if no one else is looking at it. But I also think maybe it's something we should table and think about. It was my personal opinion.
I don't really see the need for table with us again. I think that personal opinions versus what we have as businesses should be kept separate. I agree with you. I'd like to see something else, but it's empty, it's been empty. So, I would rather have a business than vacant property, regardless of its... I mean, it's not such a bad thing, but it checks the boxes for what has been applied for, which is the conditional use permit that they need at. So, I recommend that the town council go ahead and approve, make a motion to approve that we move forward with this.
Your turn.
Oh, okay. Well... Like Kevin said, you know, we have to separate personal opinions from the fact that, you know, we laid out requirements and conditional use from it, and if they are, you know, if they fulfill all of those requirements, we can't just, you know... They're meeting us where we asked them to meet us. Am I a fan of it? I mean, no, but I also think that... Like you said, people are going to get it anyway, and if it has a little bit of, you know, income for the town... And one of the questions I asked with the first applicant was, is there an equivalent of syntax on vape products? And I think at the time you said that there wasn't in the state of Virginia.
None that I'm aware of, not yet.
Yeah, and that's the thing, is not yet. And again, I, you know, by approving it, it isn't an endorsement of it. It's looking at, you know, the bottom line. You know, town needs businesses in order to have revenue for, you know, infrastructure and capital improvements, and we can't make that money if you're out of nowhere. So, and I think that nothing has changed between the last time we heard, you know, we had a hearing for conditional use permit, and I think that tabling it, I think it's kicking can down the road. It's inevitable, we need to make a decision about it.
I was just curious, because I'm right here. What can we do as a town if we say they start putting these signs up there?
Well, it's ordinance violation.
That's hard, it's an ordinance violation.
So, what do we do to enforce that? Like, if we get to where this is what the rules are, but they're not following, then what do we do?
Can we pull the special use permit into the county? I think there's...
Yeah, it's a, so it's a, the conditional use permit is they have to comply with all of the ordinances. So, if there's a violation of the sign ordinance or some other aspect of it, then they would get a zoning violation letter. They would have so long to cure that violation and be in compliance. If they're not in compliance, then we can take action against them, which would be to revisit the planning commission and council, revisit the conditional use, and it could be withdrawn, or there could be legal action. And/or.
And then, you know, us at council, yes, we're supposed to look, but we can use our personal opinion.
Oh, absolutely.
And how we can... I mean, I was aware that we could, but I had our attorney look something up for me. You know, we are allowed to make those decisions based on what we think is the best for the community. Now, you know, we might not agree to clean all six of us, but for what the other one might say, but we can. You know, I look at it as one thing is you've got Food Line selling it right next door anyway. know, I look at it as one thing is you've got Foodline selling it right next door anyway. Okay, but, and my wife and I have drove from Winchester to Stanley, and there's not one vape shop that I see that I would approve because of what they look like. I just, they stick out. They, I mean, I know they're advertising, but why do you got to have all these lights around? Why do you got to have all these signs? I mean, like, can't it, do you just always, can't you just put tobacco shop? Do you have to have up the Christmas lights all year round? I don't think that's conducive to our shopping center that we have here. Yes, the cigarettes are sold there, but in the style of their advertising. Now, if we say you can't put nothing up but a plain sign, and they agree to it, I don't have anything against that. But from what I've seen, what I've looked at, and one thing I should have done, I should, I should have went around to some towns and asking what kind of revenue are you generating out of that smoke shop? Are you generating $50,000 a year or $1200? Well, you know, there's a big difference. There's going to help me maybe lean, but from just the appearance of all the ones I've looked at and all the ones I've been by, I can't approve that here. But again, that's my opinion. And yes, I know we want to have business in there. And I agree, but I just.
So, that was, that was one, that was one of the questions that was brought up in the planning commission discussion was what would the appearance look like? Because we had different, the applicants had submitted the one, the drama, the picture that you all have in front of you there. And then I went around to look at some of the other ones, kind of John did. But that came up and that, I believe you said that was a store in North Carolina maybe there?
One or one.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah.
And so, they, they said that that's what it would, that would be the appearance of the store here.
It would shake it like normally, let's say, you know, like she, because now we have one store here, he said, the other ones can be like, you know, let's say.
We can't issue a blanket statement for all of the locations if we have a conditional use permit that checks the boxes and they have submitted. I would also think, I mean, the lease on that building is, I believe, $25, $2600 a month. So, they're either not going to make it there, or if they're going to generate that much in revenue a year and have one or two people working there, I think that's a gross that would be beneficial for the town to have taxes off of a year. And I'm still, I'm still not for it, but I do like the idea of the revenue, instead of it sitting there.
I agree. We're here to make money. It's part of the business. But we have to be smart, and I agree. I may not like it, but why should I deny the freedom of choice of people if they, whether or not they want to go and purchase any products from that store, whether it be this one, or whether it be they put their funds into a different town. So, to me, it's irrelevant. I think some of the reasons we're giving are not valid. I think some are, but at the end of the day, I think what the reason we hear about the recommendation from the planning commission, again, I think we would be doing a disservice if we ignored it.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but before the ABC store opened up here in Timberville, there was a lot of concern about an increase in drunk driving incidents and public, you know, intoxication. That hasn't been the case. So, if you're worried about, you know, a decrease in quality of life because the stores in our community, thus far, you know, we've been, we have not had that proven to be true with the ABC store. And piggybacking on what you said, you know, this is, people have the freedom to choose if they want to smoke or partake in anything in the vape shops. And I, you know, I'm not going to sit here and make a judgment call on that for somebody else.
Can, can I follow up on Kevin's comment? We, I did have one comment, one statement from one of the business owners in that, in the shopping center. And it was something to the effect of, is it what I would like to have close to my store? Is it going to help my business? No. But who am I as a business owner to tell another business owner that they can't open their business?
I had somebody that I was talking to about it that pretty much stereotyped the type of people that were going in there, saying like, hey, we don't want this kind of people coming into Timberville. So, my comeback to that was, you know, there's two, there's tobacco shop in Broadway and Newmarket that are both beside ice cream stands. And both them ice cream stands stay packed with mothers and little children lined up all the way in front of the tobacco store. So, if our two neighboring towns have ice cream trucks with kids lined up, you know, people going through them to get in the door, I think it's greedy for me to say my feelings not liking this and respect to them, but not liking their business they want to open. I don't think what we were all left to do was to make the town money and be, be smart with the town. It just, it doesn't seem right to shoot this in the foot. I mean, everybody thinks the, it meets our requirements, then, and no one else is reaching out to us. We don't have somebody else saying, hey, if they don't pass it, you know, we'll build a restaurant in here. We don't have that. So, and the longevity of this with, with the, the health repercussions of this, I don't think these stores are going to be around in 10 years anyways. So, not to my opinion matters, but I, I think the, the health repercussions from this maybe, I mean, I don't think we'll see this thing here in 20 years. So.
I agree. It's our perception that that is what it's going to do. But then again, it's just a perception. It's not a fact.
It is.
No, in some places it is, Kevin. I've done a lot of reading. Some, I mean, I'm going to say specifically in this area, and it will be in this area, but you cannot say that they, in some areas, they do withdraw that kind of people. Because a lot of these areas, it's a place for them to obtain illegal marijuana. They use these things out of front. And, you know, again, you read a lot of stuff, you read a lot of good stuff about it, you read a lot of bad stuff about it. That I could care less about. But my thing is the way the appearance of the shop looks. You don't see the flashing lights, you don't see all that over. And I'm, I'm all for if everybody needs to do what they want to do. But this is a special use permit. We can add anything to it we want to add to it, if I understand it right. If we can say, okay, you can't put the flashing lights on it, and we're turning to your, or is that not?
That's, that's.
How?
That's a, that's a.
Is that a, is that a question on what's going to be galling and what's not going to be galling?
What, you mean the way that it's written down?
Yes.
Or are you asking if, if we could add further requirements?
You know, if, if it goes up and, I mean, that's not biggest complaint. It hasn't been because it's a vape and a tobacco shop, because Foodline sells. But they don't want to be pulling in there and see all these flashing lights and all these big galling signs. And I, in Timberville, I don't think that's, that remains shopping center. Me, I think that does not represent well. If it would be somewhere else in town, if they wanted to have it, if it was a little more of that. But yeah, but, I mean, I'm all against trying to find ways to make money for the town. And what they're going for the most part, and what these people seem to be doing, it's all legal. But there are instances where it does have negative impact on the community.
But, so, just to make sure that I understand your main concern, your main concern is that aesthetically, it matches the shopping center?
Yes, yes. I have to look against, I mean, it's legal what they want to do. And I'm just like everybody else. I can't put that restraint on you.
Right.
I don't think it's fair that we do that. But I don't think it's fair to ask you, can you make it fit in with the surrounding architecture or the, the way it is there? I mean, I'm totally against, and I'm afraid to say it, but I'm going to say it. I was an alcoholic growing up. I don't support drinking now. If it was my opinion, the ABC store would be out of town. They wouldn't sell beer and stuff in these stores. And I'm, I guess, totally against smoking. But that's a, that's a choice that each individual has. So, if somebody wants to sell that, and it's legal, yes. I mean, but my, my thing is just the cosmetic, the way it looks. Nothing against the business itself.
Yeah.
Because it's legal.
John, I want to follow up on something AC said. That was quite the discussion that we had during the planning commission. Because I think our concern was the same, was how does it look? Why do they all have to look straight off the Vegas Strip? And so, the conversation that we had with them was, they have a store in North Carolina that you see in the packet, and then they have two other stores a little closer to home that are a little more what you're used to seeing. And so, the discussion was, this is not what we want for our community. And I would say that that part of the discussion went much better with this group than the group before. They were much more willing to say, we'll do what you want to make it look the way you want. And if you want what the North Carolina store looks like, we'll do that. So, for us, even though that wasn't part of our consideration, well, that was, certainly eased our concerns quite a bit. Because I think we were with, where we are with that.
Yeah, no, I'm, like I said, I'm not against the plan to make money, and I'm not against anybody using their right to run what kind of legal business they want to run. But, you know, we can, I mean, if, if the council member has that, has a personal thing, they don't have to prove. But it's, that's not what I want to be taking as. As long as it looks good enough, that's. And by that picture, I mean, that's, that looks no different than anything else in the shopping center we have. So, you know, not lights going on off all night, five o'clock in the morning. Again, that just, if I live in a big city, I might be able to accept that a little bit harder. But I took it here all my life, and that's a little harder for me to accept. But as far as having the right to do it, yes, they, they meet the boxes. Nothing wrong with the council asking if they can go above or beyond a little bit. And that just, again, that's my opinion. And everybody has good points.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to act on the request?
On that motion, that we act on the request to approve.
Okay, second.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Yes.
F, present.
Well, they're not bound necessarily by the picture. It's more by the application itself, the picture's diagram.
Yeah, you could look at.
I'm sorry.
In terms of the picture itself, that's a diagram. That's not, not bound by this presentation. It doesn't have to look exactly that way.
It would have to be similar in.
Similar.
That, that aspect, right.
Which one of these gentlemen here is the one that's wanting to open shop? Would you agree that you don't have a problem with displaying your shop in this manner?
Yeah.
Just plain and simply?
Yeah, he's going to break.
I'm sorry.
The cover's going to be wet.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's going to be sandy.
No surface lights. Okay, well, I mean, again, so, yeah, you know, and we have him on record saying that now.
The way you're going to look from outside, we're only going to have this sign. And the other sign is going to be open sign with the glass window. That's all.
Well, then I'll have to say yes.
No. Yes.
Okay.
We didn't ask plaintiffs why.
I was with Terrence, I really was. But to get this, to share it, and you know, Kevin made good points, you know. They check all the boxes. And my biggest concern for being a good thing is not that it was, in my opinion, it's bad, but that's just my opinion. I want it to look good. I didn't want to see, first thing somebody's seen come down off the block with his lights over flashing. And then, that's it. And he's, he has assured us that it will not look like that. And, you know, I eat spam. A lot of people don't like spam. So, you know, they've done, like Kevin said, they've done everything. They've got the boxes checked. They've assured us that it would not look galling. Yes, we can use every penny of, any help we can get.
Thank you. You don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting. You're free to, free to go. And I'll get you, I'll be helping to complete the paperwork for you.
I know, because I have the chair getting like.
I'm sorry.
Okay, since planning commission is already in session, then we go to our next public hearing, which is the rezoning on 200 North Main Street. And I think everyone has that application.
So, the, I received one comment. It's several questions from Mrs. Conley, who's here tonight. The one comment was concerned about with Community Circle, especially trying to get off of, from Main Street to Community Circle, Community Circle on the Main Street, the site distance there is not the greatest. So, the one, we talked about that, the way that that lot is arranged, that they can actually fit, or a structure can be fit on that property and meet all of the setbacks as required in the, in the, the land development regulations. I had to go back and, when we were talking about this, it took me a while to remember because we did the, the lot division was done last year. But I, it kind of clicked a little bit, that during that lot division, that was one of the things, was that the front lot had to be a certain size to meet all of those setback requirements, even though we do have some other, we have some other clauses in there that when your front setback is lesser on the existing homes on the street, it can be adjusted to match those as the average. But that, the lot does, is big enough that it would be able to keep the, a new structure setback far enough where we would have, it would hopefully improve the site distance issues. And Mr. Bell's here, the applicant. So, if you want to, if you want to, if, is there anything that you want to address to council first, or?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, one question I would have, I know we discussed it a little bit, was you were talking about the existing house versus tearing that down and putting up a new house. And you, and you said you were kind of unsure at that point.
I'm a little bent, so I'm 50/50. I really haven't had enough time to, you know, look through and see how much actual damage has been done. It could be termite damage. I really don't know. I'd like to fix it up because it does have some historical value. You know, it's an old log house. But I'd have to do some digging to see if it's even worth me fixing it up versus tear down, relive.
Well, fell place?
It's, or the one in behind. It's the Weaver House. It's right on the corner of Community Circle and North Main Street.
Okay.
And then there was, there was one comment that was brought up, or a comment was made during the planning commission's discussion about.
Yeah, Community Circle.
Potential that maybe it's something the town should consider is making Community Circle one way. It's a narrow road, and there is more development. We've got the new town home close to North Main Street, and then new residents that accesses, that's up in the field there as well, that was part of Mr. Montalano's development. And so, it's definitely a, a wise suggestion to look at that. If you have it one way, then you don't have two vehicles trying to pass. This Conley informed me today that there were people that used that as a cut through from Church Street to Main Street.
Wow.
It's kind of a maple attitude. I don't know that you really date anything by doing that. But, you know, that, that might curtail some of the cut through traffic if you had it one way. But it's something we look at. We looked at one, we looked at C Street years ago about making that one way, and we couldn't go get anywhere with that. It wouldn't be as, affect as many residents, current residents on Community Circle as what a C Street would have done. So, that's something to keep in mind, too. So, those are just the comments that we've heard and that the planning commission has discussed so far. So, anything else?
The, the existing structure would be my first plan. You know, figure, figure out what I'm going to do with that first. And then down the road would be the, the duplexes.
Okay.
I don't have a timeline on that. It's just me. Don't have a lot of money, so.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, open, open it up for public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Elizabeth Conley. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask the gentleman who's going to develop.
So, typically, what you, what you would do is address the council?
Uh-huh.
And then council has the discretion to, oh, how they handle the, your question or comment.
Okay. Because my understanding is because of the homes being tight on the street, right in that block of Main Street, there's a variance that allows construction or, and I, my question would be whether it's a tear down or whether it's a renovation. Well, if it's a renovation, I go stay where it is. If it's a tear down, is the developer's intent stated? Well, if it's a renovation, I can go stay where it is. If it's a teardown, is the developer's intent stated intent, it's just intent, to build out closer to the road, because that, they, I mean, there is an issue with being able to see to get out. I think if Community Circle was a wider street, but it's not, it's real tight. And so, being able to see, you can see where the house is set now, you can see to get out. But if, if, if a structure was to be built closer to Main Street, I'm this tall, and I don't drive a big SUV or a truck, so it's hard to see out. And I'm not the only one on that street who's just driving like normal, the kind of cars people used to drive. So, that would be my question, if, and obviously it doesn't seal a deal, but I would love to know the intent.
So, would request us to rezone it from B1 to R2?
Right.
So, if any of the buildings have demolished and they were ever being rebuilt in any way, or new structures were built on there, they would have to comply with all the zoning setbacks as required in an R2 district?
But my understanding.
Right, but we have the clause in there that allows for the average setback based on the other structures on the street.
We have to look at that.
Which makes it very, which means that it can be built very close to, very close to the street if, if that, you know, if we adhere to that clause. So, I think we'd need to be some kind of assurance. We could probably, we could probably say whether we were or weren't going to approve of that, too, based on VDOT recommendation, if VDOT looks at that as far as. That's gonna get kind of dicey because VDOT, that is not, that is a town-maintained street, Community Circle is a town-maintained street. So, VDOT may not have any equipment there, if they all up to the pound, so we could say it needs to sit down.
And that would be when you're looking at the zoning requirements for the building permit? Any, any type of recommendations that would be required, or requirements that would be required for the structure that would be located on it? But as it is now, it's not, it's just a rezoning, unless the council just wanted an added condition to the rezoning. So, the council could recommend approval or denial as presented, or as presented with the added condition that no future structures be located within a certain amount of feet from Main Street or Community Circle.
So, the existing structure, you feel that there is enough site distance with the existing structure?
That's how we're coming in and out all the time, and, and you can see out, it's good visibility, so that's not an issue. But it's just if it's a teardown and the one gets closer to the street, then that's gonna be an issue. I have a question, it's not specifically to the rezoning, but because I am an adjoining landowner, would I get notice for the building permit or whatever? Or is this, this is my chance to say? Because it is, it is a big deal, like I said, if it was a wide road, it wouldn't matter if the house was set right up, because you, you'd have enough room to see out. But it's just so tight and narrow. I just want to invite everybody here to go drive around Community Circle, just one time, and you'll see what I'm talking about. But that was, that was my own big concern. Thank you.
So, if council could put a condition on it as far as, you know, it couldn't be something as close as what the existing structure is, if the existing structure doesn't, or create a site distance issue, you know, that would be, I mean, that doesn't seem reasonable. I'm not even sure, I don't even, I'm not even sure what the setback on the existing structure, do you have a part from the street the existing structure is?
Do I?
Yeah.
Do you want?
No, I, I don't, I don't.
Any change or something?
So, I'm gonna take my planning commission hat off right now and say, so this is B1, I could pop a business down in there, right? So, I think I'd rather have the homes instead of someone saying, pop a drive-through coffee shop down right here in this spot and just allow by rights, so.
So, yeah, a little bit of history on this, when this was, when the lot line revision was done last year, the thought was that it would, and it was marketed that way, I believe, that the, whoever was gonna purchase the property would have to do, get a conditional use to build a single-family dwelling or duplex on the property, because it's B, it's B1. The more logical thing is to have it rezoned, because then you don't have to worry about a conditional use and trying to follow the conditional use in the future of councils and administration to keep track of something like that. The, you know, I think the thought was that even with a conditional use, that it was very likely that it would be approved, meeting the requirements. If it was B1 and somebody wanted to put a single-family detached dwelling and had a duplex in there, they would have to meet the requirements of R2 zone anyway, that's the way our B1 section reads for residential use. So, either way, either way it was done, it's still gonna have the R2 zone requirements. It's just two different ways of getting it.
Okay, any other public comment? Then the public hearing is closed. Council, planning commission, do y'all have any other questions?
No questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, so the town has control of Community Circle, okay. Conceivably, we could check with VDOT to see if they have any input on, if we chose to change it to one-way.
I will check, I will, I will check with VDOT, I'm not sure VDOT has any input or one way, since it's not in the VDOT system.
Okay, yeah, because I think that that, exploring that as an option would be prudent, so.
I think based off of the history that I've, VDOT, we do, the town, and Quinn made one, also is, I don't think that the town, I don't think that VDOT can make that determination because of the fact that.
It's not theirs.
Correct, it's not, it's not in the system at all.
It's, it's more of a question of if you were to develop it to a VDOT standard to try and get introduced.
Exactly, that's gonna be the change.
If you may change it to a one-way, would they accept it at that?
Correct. And then, if, if it is made a one-way, and then it's decided to be taken into the system, then that has to be improved to meet that requirement.
Gotcha. But hopefully we're in control of all of our streets in the near future.
Trust me, where do you talk about that?
Oh, well, yeah, that's, that's another, that's another conversation.
Yeah, I thought that was a wonderful thing, too, but. I just have a question about, you know, what, how they look at making C Street one-way. I can't remember how many people's over, but you're gonna make half the people mad, and you're gonna make the other people happy. But one-way going one-way, no suit half of them, and one-way coming the other way, no suit half of them. So, you know, we just, and it seems like Ms. Conley likes to come out and make a right and left off of Community Circle.
If you drive Community Circle.
Yeah, I'm a born racer, I know.
That's like, oh, you know, but that barn is right there, you can't see.
Yeah.
And then everybody's coming down the hills, and then there's shrubbery, which I want people to build and let see if their property, I'm not fussy, but it's hard to see out. And so, if you were doing one-way, good heavens, please bring a lid, or church.
That's what we, that's what we talked about.
That's still not gonna keep the people from cutting.
But I don't know that that matters unless that house ends up a new construction on the street as opposed to setback, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't know if people cutting through is such a, I mean, they do it out and forth, but.
I'm sorry, I was totally confused, I was on the wrong part of Community Circle. When she mentioned the barn, I know which side of Community Circle now she's looking from.
Church Street.
Okay, yes. Both ends are terrible.
Okay, Brad, do y'all have recommendations?
Yeah, planning commission makes a motion to approve, makes a recommendation.
Okay. So now town council can take action. I need you to close the meeting.
Okay, plan to close the session until we go planning commission.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So, we, you said we could have the option of just approving the rezoning from B1 to R2, or we could add a conditional, like a condition to that approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you have an application for rezoning? So, your motions are move to approve as presented?
Okay.
Move to deny? Or move to approve with additional conditions? You have to list what those conditions are.
But their recommendation was just to approve?
Correct, so public, a planning commission makes a recommendation to the council, but the council does, is not bound by that recommendation.
Like, I want to approve it, but I also want to make sure that we have that with the, to make sure that we don't make an already, do it the best way possible.
So, could we add the provision?
Yeah, but Brad, like, well, what's the provision? Like, I have, approve with these additional conditions.
Correct, so one of those, I would suggest that we have a provision to create a one-way street, correct? Could we have that option because we? That's not part of it, so.
I think the, the condition that was raised is that you would say approve with the condition that if the structure is demolished and rebuilt, it not be relocated any closer to the road than that structure.
That, that would.
Okay, that's it, yes.
That's awesome.
Okay. Ah, make a motion, we approve, what if the additional condition, uh, that is, if the structure is demolished and a new one is not constructed any closer to the road than the current present structure?
I'm sorry, thanks.
Thank you. Okay?
Yes.
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 Hold, hold, hold. You said road?
Street.
But do you mean Community Circle or Main Street?
North Main Street is what I meant.
Identify which.
Sorry, I realized that's a good answer.
So, you're modifying your motion, you accept that with the second, now vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I'll get you the paperwork.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll be in touch with you soon.
I don't like saying this.
You were in the neighborhood.
I'm very.
Reluctant to say how to say it.
Well, I know, I know.
It's a lot of power, I could have.
I just need you to sound like metaphorically the Michael Jordan.
Okay, I'll do it the right way. Do we have anything for Zebra?
We have our music series, summer music series is starting, so tomorrow night is the first one, and it's the Goodson Band. And food will be provided, the Happy Monkey Churros will be there, that's the same food truck that sits up over the Walmart parking lot.
Do you know what kind of music it is?
I've looked at a very rockabilly old rock.
Rockabilly, that's.
Yeah, that's what I'm busy days, I'm just trying to figure out what it was.
And it's from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, music starts at seven, essentially.
That's not my area, sorry.
So, everybody can have enjoyed.
Show up. Yeah, before seven, honey, hungry food before the band starts.
And it's more than just churros, she's expanded her food offerings in the food truck, and she's, always has a decent little line when she sits over at the corner. And then the only other thing, I don't know, where is the Eagle Scout, the status of the Eagle Scout project?
It's done.
It's done.
The only thing is missing is the memorial park.
Okay.
But if I might look at it, it'll grow in over the next year or two.
It looks nice. It does.
Well, that's the interest of, plans the sort of memorial park, so, that's, I have one to park.
Okay, final answer?
The auditors are on site for one day, preparing for our annual audit financial report, and they will return to involve us to follow up on their duties. And we're planning to have a public hearing for a budget amendment for next month. We do this, we've done this each year since we've received the ARPA funding, so that we can adjust our current year budget to accurately reflect how much we put towards each of those pre-approved projects, so that's, we're planning to do that next month.
Okay. Out?
We need to adopt the budget.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's like, you guys are staying here.
We're moving along. Okay, we need a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget?
I make a motion to adopt the 25-26 budget.
Second, thanks. Any further discussion? Nope, okay?
Yes.
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 Okay. Now, personnel, we will be going into a closed session after the public comment to discuss personnel matters. So, Beth, do you have anything for the museum? You come on up, I do, so while you're walking, I'll talk, okay? Beth is having a walking tour this Saturday afternoon at 2:00. Please come to the museum, and we're just gonna walk a little bit around town, and he's going to explain some of the history and the historical buildings.
Are you done, Dalton?
I'm done.
Okay. This is kind of weird tonight, because I don't know, I had one thing, and the Weaver House came up, and I found an old newspaper flipping, November 28th of 1906, and that was 10 years before the official fire department was first formed here in Timberville. Of course, it died out, and it starts again four to seven, or whenever, but this is, yeah, 1906, and got a newspaper flipping of a fire. And it said, near the Erasmus Neff House, well, that's the Weaver House. And it must have been another house, and he had a shed that caught on fire, but it was another house evidently further up toward the old schoolhouse. And, and that caught on fire, a chimney, sparked out a chimney set on thorns, a woman and little boy upstairs, and the townspeople rescued them. And then, the Razz and Deff, they called the Razz, his shed caught on fire, and the old schoolhouse caught on fire, a couple different times during, during the fire. And all these years, I've never heard that that schoolhouse caught on fire, and they had a bucket brigade, and they put the, kept putting the fire out, and they saved his shed, and of course, they saved the school. But the house burned down, but 1906, but I've never heard all these years that the old school had caught on fire several times, and they kept, they kept putting it out, so. And that's kind of odd, we're talking about the house over the corner, that just stood out to the point of that, right up that alley there, so.
Well, I do have another question for you.
I don't know.
Well, yes, you would. Behind the lawn party grounds, that big like salo, what was that?
You, somebody asked me that years ago, and I wish you'd quit asking me questions I can't answer. I don't know, did we ever find out what? I don't know, I can't stand here and answer that.
Okay, you were, you tried to find out.
Well, if you find out, let me know.
Well, no, because I'm asking, I don't know, so tell me something.
That came up years ago, and I don't remember whatever came up there.
And it's huge, it's like, it's huge.
That back there was Paul Mosey's, Mosey's Litter Company?
Yeah.
When they had, because they had.
I know you had the building over there, and you had.
But he didn't have that, it was like a chimney, like.
I think he.
Was that part of it?
Because seeing, I asked Paul's nephew, and they said that was not part of the shavings place, because I thought it was.
Well, I always thought it was.
Well.
Well, you're gonna figure out what that is now.
We're giving you home.
I don't like to be here.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, have any other business that needs to be addressed?
Don't get back, say, what world would him say?
Any public comment? Okay, so then, we're going in.
Sarah's got the, someone's got to read.
Okay, Sarah, you want to read that, we will be going in closed session.
Yes, I mean, and also down here, it has no, is it?
I do look at my, it probably.
Okay, okay. Uh, this is going to closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3, 711A1 for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And I recommend that we invite the following individuals to join the closed session, the Austin and Quentin.
Do I need to use your last names? Make it super formal, so...
We're all in here, we have a motion. Got some action.
That's motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Push it a second, you gotta give it up a buck.
Give one.
That's a motion.
All right, you're ready?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.